Mr. Chairman, we are live.
Okay, welcome everybody. Today is Monday, April 18th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. This time I would please ask everyone to rise, say the pledge. Ed, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Ed. Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda. There's no additions or corrections that they entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, there is an individual that I would like to present to the commissioners during the opportunity for the general public to present. So after your executive session, I have sent him an invite. It's Mr. Jeff Schroeder, and he would just like to introduce himself. That will be at the time for the when individuals have the ability to present.
Okay. So, everybody good with that?
I move to approve the agenda for April 18th.
No, I'll second. Move to second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll run on into our agenda. The next item is commissioner discussion. We have some action items. Meeting minutes of April 11th. Everybody get a chance to read those?
I did, I didn't see any changes.
So I would entertain a motion to approve those?
Make a motion we approve minutes of April 11, 22.
Move to second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The guardian applications. So those were from like last September? Do we need to approve those? Is that?
I would say so.
But they want to join like what board, actually?
The Board of Community Guardians.
Okay. So in ELTA, you're on that board, right?
Yeah, and I've never been officially appointed or anything. I just kind of assumed it for Gordon. And basically, community guardians, you have a lot of super seniors end up hospitalized that have no family, no anybody to take care of their estate, and that's what the community guardians do is they get that person's finances, they figure all that stuff out for them, and pay you their bills and...
So there is an actual board?
Yeah, and I think last year we had one. Doug, you remember?
I don't remember.
I think we had one person.
I remember you going to a meeting at some moment.
It's not really, it's not an agenda meeting. It comes up spur of the moment, and so they'll call and say, hey, we've got a community guardian, and there's different people that do different functions. I think, what's the guy's name, Roger? It's not coming right now.
But these guys still both want to be appointed, right?
And yeah, it's not a paying position. It's not really an official. It's just a group of folks that care about...
Someone asked him to be appointed to that, is that correct?
Yeah, we have two of them.
Okay.
And that was in your package.
Did you see the applications in your packet?
From Gabby. It came from Gabby, and we have two of them. Let's see, that's not it. Where is it?
And the request came from Mr. Rob Bryant, who is the chairman of the Board of Community Guardians.
Rob, thank you.
It seemed like I saw something, but I'm not sure.
It was Jody and Candace, correct?
Jody and Candace, right.
I think they would both be great additions to that board, so I would move to approve the two appointments for our employees to the Valley County Board of Community and Guardians. Jody Green and Candace Limbaugh.
So I'll second that, but as far as the discussion, the two people that we are looking at, Jody is the...
Planning zoning.
Planning zoning, Jody.
And Candace works in Doug's office now.
These are in-house people work for the county. Is that typical? Is that a...
So they would be required to do it on their own time? This is something that they have indicated that they want to do as a volunteer, yeah, as providing some sort of service to the community, both of them expressed an interest. Both of them, I can speak for Candace, ask my permission. And of course, I said as long as it's not being done on counting time, she would have the ability to do that. I would assume that Cindy had the same discussion with Jody. So yes, is it typical for county employees to be on the Board of Community Guardians? Maybe not typical, but they are members of the community and have expressed an interest to participate. And I don't, unfortunately, I don't think that the Board of Community Guardians has had anyone else step up to do it. So these two individuals have expressed an interest.
Well, I apologize for not really knowing anything about this, but the community guardian thing, but it sounds like very worthwhile.
Well, and you work with the judge. I think the reason why Jody applied at this in September 21 was she worked for the Treasures. And Gabe Staten used to be that person. So then when he resigned, then Jody kind of stepped in. But there's somebody that has an unbiased, fair opinion that knows how to handle, you know, books and checking accounts and digging all that stuff out. Rob does a great job of kind of leading everything and making sure people are taken care of.
So Rob heads that up.
He's kind of, yeah.
He's a great guy. I know Rob personally.
And it's a great group of people, and it varies. So once or twice a year, maybe, you might have to get together to discuss someone.
Kind of is, is that kind of a go-between between them? And a lot of times, these things land up be state issues, don't they?
Yeah, this is more if someone that's elderly is incapacitated and they have no ability to pay their bills, make decisions. And if they look and see if there's a will, if there's heirs, if there's the power of attorney, if there's a living will, all that stuff is kind of put together by this group and follow the wishes of that person.
I had no idea that was even there.
And honestly, years ago, the churches used to do it.
Yeah.
So is this a county affiliated board at all?
Nope.
This is not.
Nope.
I don't know really why we even need a point, but...
Yeah, that's kind of an interesting scenario.
It's an honor. It's kind of an honorary kind of a thing. But we have a motion and a second. Did we vote on that, Doug?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I'm assuming that I can let them know, or you can let them know, if they're on that. Okay, our next item is an action item. This is a discussion decision related to reconfiguring of the commissioner's room. And I think this is appropriate. Ever since I've been on this board, we've all been really disappointed in the layout of how this all worked. It should curve the other way so that we can see each other without having to move our chairs and back and forth. But I'm not sure how to proceed, whether or not we want to look at that company that provided a lot of the furniture for dispatch. Maybe they have something that they could do. I know this one was kind of hand-built. And, hey Mitch?
Hey, how y'all?
Good to see you, man.
Good to see you guys.
This probably needs to be something that is put on the CIP program and looked at. Have Scott bid for us, you know, what's going to happen.
You're suggesting that you turn this as a job over to the...
Thank you.
Hi there. So we turn this as a job over to the county facilities. That's my, that's first thought I had.
But I think we need to have kind of a general design, because I know you guys use this for P&amp;Z, so it should seat at least five people.
Right. It should seat at least five, plus it should seat six, minimum, just because it'd be nice to have Doug sitting right over there, kind of, you know. And then this person here would be kind of opposite for him. And it probably means a little bit of work in the base here to kind of manipulate things, but...
We need to get rid of that.
Need, yeah, we need to get, well, that would stay, but this part here would be up here as opposed to back here.
Well, we need to make it more secure that somebody doesn't roll their chair off that step.
But anyway, it's just, I, it's just, I brought this up because we've been dealing, you've been dealing almost alone, but I've been over 20 years, you know, dealing with this. And it worked, but it's always like this, you know. And now, I'm sitting here, I can't actually see Doug, but you know, so if he has to weigh in or something, you know, it's always one of these kind of...
Yeah, you're always dodging.
But anyway, I know that probably would cost a little bit, but on the other hand, looking forward, I think personally, it's worth us, you know, say, well, it's facility. It's a tool. It's, you know, so...
Well, and if you guys have ever been to courtrooms, you know, in this one upstairs, it's different wood, it's different kind of furniture. It's very nice looking. You go to other counties and look at some of their setups, and although Adams County, they're still kind of sitting behind a pretty rough desk. But I think something like similar wood, similar color, similar kind of stuff as in the courtrooms would be appropriate.
And I think maybe it, from our standpoint, we could just assign that as a part of facilities managed project, but basically put some, maybe first, some timeline on it. Go, okay, this is Scott. We want you, you know, something to be done here in a timely manner. And then give them a reasonable time to do it. Go out and come up with a design, bring it back to us. What do you think?
So what about, I am going to put as a recommendation, I don't think it got on today's, but I am going to ask for an architect to start looking at our facilities. The facilities committee met last week. We want to look at what our expansion plan is so we can start planning for this. And whether, so my concern with spending money right here, right now, is what if an architect comes in and says, this should be office space and our meeting space should be somewhere else? I just think...
Just trying to think where else would be big enough.
Well, it's, that's the whole thing. We're going to need to add on. Scott's recommendation, Klingon, was that we put a two-story building over beside YCAP. However, a lot of the employees in that meeting said, let's build on, right on the other side of this wall. So we need, we need a full conversation around, you know, what is the future?
I understand, I understand what you're saying, but one of the problems with that, if you throw this into that mix, we're not, none of us are going to see it. You know, so this, me, this is a maintenance issue. This is a facility we have.
The other part or other aspect of that, and we've talked about this in the past, is redesigning the front entrance for security and get something different than the fold-out tables and stuff they're using there. So I think we could throw kind of some of this all together and get some continuity in the facility.
Little package, you know, but how do we put that together from this, from right here? Do we move that to Scott with some direction, you know, with some timelines, some direction? And, you know, I mean, it's not like we're just going to brush it off to the back burner, kind of, you know. Here is a definite focus.
Well, and again, anything that's spent that's over $25,000 has to go through the CIP committee or approval. You know, we are actively meeting. We're starting that discussion right now, so...
So what committees would...
It's capital improvement plan.
Yeah, CIP, yeah.
Well, and I, you know, I've said this in the past, I think that's, it's great because the CIP committee can kind of flush out the details on a lot of this stuff.
Yeah.
And their recommendations are just recommendations to us. We certainly would take those into consideration. But I think this is a project, same with the front door entrance, that could be done soon.
Yep.
I don't think we need to wait for a year or two or three and do this big generalized plan. And, because I don't know where else you're going to find a room big enough to do this.
It's not going to go away quickly.
You know, unless we tore out a whole bunch of walls somewhere. Are they looking at like the growth of the departments and how many more offices? And that's part of that study?
Right now, there is no place to put the prosecuting attorney's office. And it is, where we have them is not viable. Just having people, victims of crime come in and sit on that bench, it's just not viable. So they're going to have to look at it.
So there's other, other projects similar to this. And you know, it's okay to tie them together, but it's also sometimes cumbersome. So if you have a specific project like that, and it sounds like, needs to be dealt with.
The front door does. And that was on Scott's budget last year.
Not yet, not five years from now, but okay. We got to move on. You got to have something that works.
Well, and we actually hired a guy to build the cabinet in DMV, a cabinet guy down here by the post office. And he did okay, but it took a long time to get that put together.
That's where that time thing comes in. It's like...
Me, this has got to be maybe a little higher level of production and colors and all that stuff. Doug, how do you feel about this? I want your input, too.
I think it should go through the capital improvement planning committee, just to determine if it is one of their priorities. That would just be my, my suggestion. Capital Improvement Committee was created to make recommendations to the commissioners. I believe, I mean, I don't know, depending on what needs to be done or the amount that it's going to cost, I envision it probably being over the threshold or, so again, just to continue with the Capital Improvement Planning Committee and the creation of that, I do believe that this proposal should go to them, for them to be able to weigh in, make recommendations to the commissioners, to determine priority. Because as the commissioners are aware, we do, we are just starting the budgeting process for fiscal year 2023. I've received probably seven capital improvement request forms so far that the Capital Improvement Committee will be evaluating and prioritizing. And that's just the beginning of the budgeting stage. So I do anticipate that we are going to be seeing maybe a handful more on top of the ones that we've already received.
We have a meeting tomorrow, Doug.
I know we're, I know it's, I know we're dealing with, you know, the big picture here kind of some, some extent. But I don't think we should allow some of these little projects, like when you were talking about down there with the, you know...
That's already in the budget.
Yeah, let's do, do something about that. And the same thing with, say, if this is a tool that needs to be fixed, then, yeah, CIP would be, is great for coming with the suggestions, how to get things done. But we don't want to just throw that in a mix that just stays there for, that's why I think we just decided we want to move forward with it. And yes, request, that they come and take a look at it, you know, put it in their plan, and come up with a reasonable date for doing it.
I do like the fact that this is raised.
Yeah.
Because it gives you a chance to kind of see more than the audience.
It is a good idea, yeah, that part of it, yeah.
I know if you really, you know, go around some of the other courthouses in the state and look at their commissioner room, and it's like, we could do a lot of improvement here and make this look a little more professional.
I actually looked this up online, just to kind of get some ideas for these type of configurations. And, well, they all come, every one of them comes up either fancy or not so fancy, but they're all, you know, a reasonable curve, you know. It's a, I guess you'd call it concave from the audience as opposed to convex, you know.
Well, and I even thought about...
And put this in backwards.
Yeah, they did. And then you thought about, do we need that door? You know, like those pipes over in the corner, those could go, because that's from the old, old, old heating system and stuff like that. And then you start looking at, how far are we going to gut this room?
I wouldn't envision, my personal opinion is you, it's not like it's one of your big CIP projects where you're looking down the road. What, what's this, what's county going to look like 20 years from now, thing?
Well, to do it, though, you've got to replace all the carpet. You've got to, you know, you've got to do the carpet at the same time. You've got everything ripped out. We should be painting it. So it's not, it's not just a small thing.
I agree with you 100%. Yeah, it should be painted.
And so it's, it is something that we just have to make sure that this is a priority.
Well, you're going beyond this to the, to this.
We have to. We're going to do this. So, you know, you got to redo the flooring.
Well, think about it, if it is in your house, what part of it would you do if you wanted to do, you know, change your living dining room set around? You wouldn't necessarily rebuild the house.
But this is built into the house. And when you change the carpet, you got to...
Well, I think we, we got to kind of reach a middle of the show. Let's, let's see what CIP comes up with tomorrow. And maybe they could make this a higher priority.
Are they meeting tomorrow? Is that, is that what you're saying? So we can hand this off through Doug, or?
When Scott's in later, we can ask him to start working on it.
Yeah, billings and grounds.
Okay.
Oh, is he on? I don't know if he's on today. Maybe not.
He's on today.
We'll talk about it tomorrow, then, the CIP meeting.
But I think we're all in agreement that something needs to be done, and that's what we're doing today is. And this is an action item, so I need a motion then to present this.
I'll make a motion that we present this to the CIP, what do you call it, CIP committee, for review and a recommendation with, you know, pretty reasonable timeframe. I'm not sure how to phrase that.
And I'll second that, but I want to know the cost of it. I want to make sure that this is a priority. We've got some priorities, and I just want to make sure we have a full
I don't know what we're getting into, but...
And it's like any project, we don't know until we see what the bids come in.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we got a move, motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And Sheriff, I'm sure you'll keep us abreast on what CIP does.
Will do.
Okay, we have about seven more minutes till our next agenda item, so I'm going to take a quick break. I'll be right back.
Cindy, guess what? I'm going to be a grandma again. My oldest son. Yeah, due in October, which is already two of my grandchildren's birthdays. A lot of kids do in October. Actually, I have a niece that is having one in October. That was good. Who's going to present to the capital improvement? Who's going to present on this? I'll just talk to him about it. Scott's going to have to do the bid on it, so we'll have to... I know P&amp;Z's always been in favor of that, because you find them scooting back, and then you don't pick them up on the recorder and...
Yeah, it's just tough. It's just tough to do business this way. And that's why I couldn't help but impress, it just don't, just don't play it off for years. Tell them we need something done here, personally, is what I think. So...
That was a matter of cost, unfortunately. But we do have, not only that, but we also have ARPA funding available that we're working on, too.
Yeah.
Pat must be listening. Hi, Pat. Hopefully, you're feeling better. She said grandkids are the best, so she heard me say I'm going to be a grandma.
I don't know about that. Do you mind if we sit up here, or?
Yeah.
Want me up there, Cindy?
Yes. Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
So your speaker is up there, so you have to talk loud?
Gotcha.
Use your outside voice?
Yeah.
Or I can give you my microphone, too, but it don't, it don't pick me up, so...
It picks me up when I sit over there.
You use your outside voice.
I do.
You got about five more minutes, guys, and we'll get to it.
I had talked to Drena also about coming for this discussion, so I don't know if they will be here or not, but...
You know, P&amp;Z has asked a couple different times if they could change it.
Yeah.
The thing.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, this is, this should have happened 20 years ago when they, but...
Did, did they give you any kind of a recommendation? I mean, to get six people, it's going to have to be fairly large. So where would you want to sit? I mean, if we're doing something, is the table still appropriate, or what would be, that's why I'm just saying, you know, some kind of a...
You could just even, you'd push this whole thing back, you know, and then just curve it around. I could probably still sit at the table, or Lori would be on the computer.
And that computer should be kind of over in that corner. The only thing is looking from, from this, I mean, I, I'm just, I'm a handyman. I've done this stuff for lots. You just, you basically improve this little pad here. Take this off, prove this little pad here, you know, and the same thing over there a little bit. And then basically take this and turn it around, eventually. Now, you can't really turn it around, you just have to rebuild it. Probably take this and get away with it. And then this, and then you just back everybody, leave yourself about four feet by somewhere, which is a typical hall. Like, you got to have that behind you. So you could, you'd move up a little ways on that one, so people can go behind you.
There's a whole conversation, again, about security also. You know, some, some of them have got locked doors on the ends of them, so people can't get back here.
You could do that if you wanted to. You could have that over here, you know. And basically, build bulletproof wall, whatever.
Some days, you've been in P&amp;Z. I've been in P&amp;Z before. That's what it kind of feels like.
I'm sorry. Oh, anyway. But it's not like it's rocket science. It's pretty...
Well, and the other thing to think about, too, and it's just, you know, stuff comes to your head, is you could take this wall out and expand it back into this next room, another...
What's over on that side there?
And we got lots of room.
We'll take one from that corner there.
There's a break room for the...
Yeah, and then you obviously got some sort of infrastructure, like water or something in there.
I don't know.
Electricity, probably, or water, maybe a duct, you know, heating ducts or something like that.
Get into this building, and God only knows what will find.
If you start going back into another wall, you are taking, you're getting in some costs now.
What break room is that, Sherry?
Yeah.
That's the, it's the prosecuting attorney's break room. Or it's the clerk.
My guess is...
Oh, that's where that, there used to be a door there.
My guess is when you get into what Sherry was talking about, about long-term planning, this probably could be a minor maintenance thing, because this is adequate for the most part.
We could probably put a door and escape.
Very seldom ever have a full house. If we do, we go over to the...
You know, we could take this door out, and that's why this door was in this case, you know.
It is nice to have a little office.
I'd basically, I'd stay away from the heavy reconstruction.
It's interesting, if you see the old, old plans of this building, this whole room was gel cells. And even where the Treasures, it was all gel cells, little eight-by-eight gel cells. And they've really done a lot of remodeling on it over the years. You know, every 20 years, it changes a little bit. I think we still have those plans somewhere.
Yeah, the prosecutor was, the gel also.
Yeah.
Anyway, I...
I thought the original one was over there. But, yeah, Ed, I completely, I'm completely feeling you.
Yeah, don't, just don't turn it into this, this earth-shaking change, in my opinion.
Earth-shaking? I don't like doing things twice. I'm a whole nother.
Well, you know...
How many people have come and said, five years later, oh, if only we would have done that?
You know about that kind of stuff. If you do it once, it might be happening 10 or 15 years from now, so, you know.
Okay, we're going to move on down to our agenda. Our next item is an action item. This is a discussion decision related to a request to do a groundwater study. I don't know this. Gentlemen, you want to introduce yourselves?
Sure. My name's Tim Farrell. I'm with Mountain Water Works. We're a civil engineering firm. We do drinking water, wastewater, groundwater development projects throughout the state. Our business manager has been in front of you a couple times, or, I don't know if it was in front of this council, but regarding the problems at Yellow Pine.
Yellow Pine.
We're working with Yellow Pine right now. We're working with many of the other white rural areas of this region. Donnelly.
So you're a private, private enterprise, Tim?
Yep, yep. Mountain Water Works is the name of our company. So I'm a licensed civil engineer, but I've been working in the water business for 40 years.
And quite a bit of it here in the valley.
Yep. Yeah, and I live in the county, so I live up in, in Landy, up at Donnelly.
And Tim volunteered to come kind of back me up. I've been hearing about Tim. Everyone says, well, just call Tim and ask him. And finally, I did. And he said he'd come, you know, kind of back me up on the little presentation. But last week, I was listening to the presentation from Valley Soil Water Conservation District and Pam, and then I immediately sent you an email and said, well, perhaps we should do a water study. That seems to be something, you know, that's brought up a lot during planning and zoning meetings, and something that needs to be done. So I sent all of you the email. Well, Ed commented back, and I was just going to read it, said that in the past, we have more or less assumed that the state agency, which is DEQ or Idaho Department of Water Resources, that we would rely on their monitoring, and this would probably weigh in, and that they would weigh in if needed. We still rely on input from various agencies. We always notify the agencies. It also asks that this subject be brought back to the table very soon to resolve and recognize that the other commissioners are concerned about making sure that we bring the community into this... and recognize that the other commissioners are concerned about making sure that we bring the community into this discussion. He asked, I bring it back to the board for further consideration and present my argument for need in any supporting material that I feel is appropriate, my estimate of cost to Valley County and a, and a projected and logical timeframe. And then Sherri wanted me to kind of put it out to the P and Z and stuff and maybe they would weigh in on the need for the water study, the survey for the ARPA funds. So I did some research, you know, kind of from the 20,000 foot level and came to the following conclusions. Based upon short discussions with different professionals, Tim, Idaho Department of Water Resources. I Googled a lot of information, you know, trying to get to the bottom of things. And you have to remember that I'm not a scientist, a hydrologist or a hydrogeologist. I learned all about those. You know, a hydrologist looks at surface water, the hydrogeologist looks at groundwater. So it's a whole science in itself. So water studies for assessments of groundwater resources should be done for site-specific public water systems or land uses with large water consumption in areas where there are concerns about quantities of water. For instance, Brundage Mountain just did a water study, you know, because they're going to be using a lot of groundwater for their public water systems. And then these are some of the various thoughts that I came to as I was researching this. It would be a huge and expensive task to study the entirety of the groundwater availability in Valley County or even Long Valley. There are many different aquifers, artisan wells, different strata throughout the region. Aquifers are layered and changed depending upon the types of soils, rocks, et cetera. I'm sure that Tim can expand on that very shortly. Weather changes how quickly aquifers are recharged. We are currently in droughts, but then we have high water years and it, it all becomes cyclical. Idaho statutes, according to Idaho Department of Water Resources, it's like 44, 414. I mean, he just kept throwing the number out there. Allow for individual wells on half acre parcels. You can drill an individual well on a half acre parcel. That's just an Idaho statute. We have fault lines, fault lines going throughout this county. And I was very curious about how that last big earthquake affected it. I mean, when there's an earthquake, it can even shift all of those different wells down there. So if we spend a whole bunch of money studying the groundwater for years, we have another earthquake, everything shifts. Now we have to start over again. That's why, you know, I keep coming back to individual studies if there's a groundwater, I mean, a large quantity consumption, you know, done by a developer, you know. Brundage Mountain, Tamrac did them, Jug Mountain, these types of developments. When you have a well, you know, I mean, 10 feet, 50 feet apart, you hit different aquifers, you hit different water. In the city of Cascade, we have great water, you know, from our wells out here. You know, you go 50 feet over and you hit a bunch of iron. You know, at different levels, so it all depends on where you get. So instead of a geology or hydrogeologic, geologic study on water availability, we should determine the potential to build infrastructure based on groundwater development throughout the area. The overview of hydrogeology and existing water production, looking at the growth and recharge of aquifers. What infrastructure would be required to serve and regionalization of public water systems? Public water systems are systems that have over 14 connections. So you get your individual well on the half acre, but if you get up to 14 connections, then you have to do a public water system. And that's Department of Environmental Quality. If there are large, larger lots, there is sufficient water for individual wells. Shallow wells are regenerated, regenerated by snow and rain. The big challenge is the high density that challenges the aquifers. Smaller lots should be a regional effort. We can hire a consultant to develop an inventory of existing public water systems and existing infrastructure, then plan for the regionalization of those systems. You know, the connectivity of all the different public water systems. We can also do the inventory in-house with our own GIS, developing the inventory of the public water systems and the available infrastructure that's already been placed in the unincorporated areas. Some of our public water systems that are already out there, and I listed the ones that, that kind of came to mind are Jug Mountain, Tamrac, Blackhawk on the River, Jug Handle Estates, Arrowhead Point has one, Fur Grove, Meadows at West Mountain, Hox Bay, Cranshores. The Roseberry Shalays should have one. They're working on it. And then some of the subdivisions over on West Mountain have a kind of a public water system where they are using runoff and surface water. But I don't know that they're allowed to drink that anymore. I think that they might just use it, you know, for toilets or the thing. A regional plan would determine the feasibility of connecting public water systems to create a regional water system once you get enough of them close together. One of the thoughts, the Idaho Department of Water Resource, Water Resource gentleman stated was, in a perfect world, every well would have the ability to measure the changes and feed into a larger data table over a number of years. And then that would allow us the ability to create a model. So even if you had sporadic individual wells throughout the region in, I mean, we might be able to develop, develop this model. But to just go out and create a large, expensive water study, I don't know that that would serve us into the future because it's, it can change.
And I know back in the 80s, the Soil Conservation District came out and did some monitoring wells. I have two on my ranch and they were two inch pipe that they drove basically in the ground, started measuring water. The, that, the people that did that are gone. No one's actually coming back now and checking them every year. So I guess my thing is I think we need to see what's already been done as far as studies and maybe can correlate some of that. But I do know that this is not a, just a one-time cost. This is going to be a yearly kind of a deal where you go back every year, different times of year and measure that water.
I would promote just doing the inventory of the water systems with the availability of the infrastructure at this time. And then I'd ask Tim to kind of talk about some of his personal knowledge in Valley County.
Sure.
Got a question. So IDWR, when they responded, they have four wells they're currently monitoring. My understanding is they would like a lot more wells. They just want them, you know, people to reach out and say, hey, I'm willing to have my well monitored. I don't believe there's a cost to do that. That is something they're doing in Valley County.
Yeah, this is a question that I came to mind when we started first talking about this. You know, Idaho Department of Water Resources has an obligation to people in the state of Idaho. You know, and so if we go to Idaho Department of Resources, what can they help us with in this regard? In other words, we shouldn't be pulling, having to pull everything out of our own budgets every time we kind of start seeing maybe a little red flag or something, you know. So I think same thing goes with Idaho Department of, IDL, same thing. You know, I mean, we had like a smoke issue, for instance. Well, we find out, well, they don't really monitor very much, but all of a sudden now they're tension, you know. And this is the same thing I was thinking with Idaho Department of Water Resources. What do they know and what can they help us with going forward in the future? You know, and how do you do that?
When, when I reached out 18 months ago, the guy said, you guys have got so much water up there. We have no concerns with water in Valley County. I think it's a 10-year study, if anything, and I, I, I think they're currently studying it.
Well, I guess that was my question, Sherri. Are they, are they really? And that's why I think this, this question came up and I think that's why we're having this discussion. And if I go away from here going, yeah, fine, we're great, it's, you know, lets it go.
They said that if they see the decline over 10 years and the ones that they do monitoring thing, then they might set up a groundwater management area as allowed by statute. But they only have a couple of those in Idaho. One of them, I think, is up in the Sprague, Coeur d'Alene area and then the Bruno area.
About home.
Did you, did you inquire about the one that Pam brought up that they were apparently doing something in Blaine County? Anybody know anything about that one?
I don't know anything about that one.
What prompted that and why they would, you know?
I would like to hear what Tim has to say about our local.
Sure.
Yeah, I think, it's good.
I, I do agree right now, you know, we, the valley's blessed with water. You know, we have all, a lot of recharge here and Sherri did a great job of summarizing the keys here. You know, just doing a regional-wide hydrogeologic study is, might be, you know, a little too much right now. The groundwater monitoring is getting more and more and the state IDWR can, as long as you request it, coming from the county, they can start drilling more and funding those wells. They have a budget, annual budget, developing that. So as we all know, data is becoming a critical thing in the world, you know, everybody's collecting.
Oh, absolutely.
So I think from a county perspective, collection of data of groundwater levels and like Cindy said also, the, there are so many different zones. There's the shallow aquifer here, there's the deeper aquifer underlying the general valley that's pretty productive, but has iron and manganese. And then you've got these bedrock basins on both sides. You know, Brundage would be a good example, that Tamrac where you're drilling in hard rock. But one thing that county can do is, is require what we call pressure, real-time pressure transducers to be installed in any new public drinking water system well. So what that is, is a one-inch tube that goes down with the pump and a transducer goes down and it's collecting data on, you know, every five minutes or something. And they're doing it down in Mountain Home and between Mountain Home and Boise right now, the stage stop. I'm doing a couple of projects down there. Any new well that goes in there, we're having to put these transducers down. They collect data and that data is then sent to IDWR. So they're, they're the collectors of the data. But the county can be the ones that require that kind of infrastructure to be built on new development, especially the high-density ones. I don't really believe on the small, you know, the two acre to five acre lot type development and a shallow well, that there's much risk right now. But data's good, so.
Data is good, yeah.
And so the more the county can partner with IDWR, get more monitoring wells in the valley and then, you know, disperse through the valley in the shallow aquifer, the better it's going to be long-term because we don't know where the drought's going to take us and snowpack.
So when you're saying that you're doing those down in like Bruno and Mountain Home, are those on the individual wells and what is the expense to do that? Or is it just on the community systems?
On the community systems, they're requiring an annual, IDWR requires an annual report because it is close to groundwater management areas. But that doesn't mean the county couldn't be proactive on North Lake Sewer District or some of these large developments. Jug Mountain Ranch, I'm working with them right now. I'm doing a water master plan for them. But some of these other ones, and we'll put transducers down there. Well, I've told them the same thing, that we're going to put this real-time monitoring and then we'll be able to see 10 years back what the groundwater levels doing. So if there is a question, then we can go back and look at the data. So I think that's very powerful. I think the aquifer here is really sound and it gets a lot of recharge from the lakes, from the canal systems and the creeks that go down in this snowpack we get. At this time, I would just say that's going to last forever. So if we start collecting data, it's, I mean, it's down to a fraction of an inch type measurement. And if somebody has a concern, if Cindy has a concern and somebody brings it up, we can go back. We can look at the groundwater levels and we can say, well, there's really no change. Or boy, there's a 10-foot change. Then you do the hydrogeologic studies to say what's impacting those, the high-density projects.
That's a great idea on the community systems. And I don't know if we need to change an ordinance or if we can just put that as part of our CUP requirements or PUD requirement.
We have a, an overlay, it's a wellhead protection ordinance and we might be able to, you know, just amend something into that to require new public water systems to put in, you know, these transducers with the, the monitoring.
In this case.
We might actually reach out to the ones that exist now and ask them and say, let's partner with them.
I know North Lake, the sewer district is going through a master plan of all their water and wastewater facilities right now. So as part of that master plan, it'd be, might be a good idea for county to ask them to make sure that as they go through this master plan that they fund, you know, they're going to get ARPA money. They'll also get infrastructure money. So it'd be good for them on all, because they have, I don't know how, you named a few of them, but they have eight non-contiguous, meaning separate little water systems. They're not all connected.
And what is the actual piece of equipment called again? What is?
It's a pressure transducer.
And what about McCall? You know, Pale Lake Swat and Shur, do they have inducers in their wells?
I don't, I don't think so. The, the city's running the water system and the water system.
Oh, it's not a.
Mostly, and they don't have great groundwater up there. So they have surface water coming out of the lake.
Yeah, oh, that's right.
Cascade would be the great example.
Donley.
Brundage, I mean, you'd be surprised, Cindy named quite a few of them. How many classified DEQ regulated public drinking water systems there are here in the area? You know, we'd catch you off guard a little bit. I gave a talk to the Boise Metro Chamber in Sun Valley last week and Speaker Bedkey was there and he was very interested in infrastructure and what we're doing. You know, I was talking, I was there to talk about underground infrastructure underneath some of the communities and the cost of replacement relative to all this investment we're getting right now, but.
I know there's a lot of areas in our state and in, in the rest of the country that are having serious issues with wells right now, drying out. You know, but I agree with you. I think we're, we're blessed to have so much water up here. I'm always intrigued by how different Valley County is, or I should say even this end of the county versus Round Valley. Round Valley has some really different soil types and clay types down there. When that ground dries out, it's like concrete. It's a whole different ecosystem.
And you know, the deep aquifer is interconnected, oftentimes separated by clays, interbedded clays that separate the groundwater down below. And oftentimes you may not be getting recharge into that deeper zone. And I'm investigating Jug Mountain Ranch, one of their wells, pumped some air a couple summers ago and it's in a deeper confined zone down below. And well itself is pumping what it should. I just tested it last week. But the deeper zone has me a little spooked that why would that well be pumping air when the well itself is producing water? So I don't know if that was an anomaly or something, but that would be a good example of something that got brought to Cindy or during development that says, we got a little problem going on over here and we need this data. So I think two things is map. You guys have GIS system mapping. I would map all the public drinking water systems. You know, an example of, they're down to small ones, you know, gas stations sometimes are public water systems. The, I always forget the, Al's our school, is a public drinking water system. We're working with them right now and they have challenging groundwater conditions there. So if we can get more pressure transducers or groundwater level transducers down these wells, then we're able to make a better decision versus a, a general study of the valley that would cost a lot of money. I'm a consultant, but I wouldn't recommend going that.
Right.
And we, we could, you know, do this inventory of the cities and counties and, and then maybe work with them to maybe get a grant or something to put these transducers in.
And you might be able to work with DEQ. They have an extensive GIS system that maps all the public drinking water systems in the state and the source and the actual sources. Cindy, you might be able to partner with them, get some of that data into your GIS system or update it, you know, every.
Carries a whiz at that stuff, yeah.
And I'm assuming Soil Conservation District will have equip funds that they could use for this as well. I think there's a lot of opportunity for funding besides county taxes. But I'm kind of in agreement with Tim and the fact that I don't think we're ever going to have an issue up here unless it just absolutely stops snowing, which is, we're all going to be in trouble.
We're all in trouble, yeah.
But, you know, as, you know, I have a ranch down in Horseshoe and water is a very tough situation down there. Wells down there are not very productive and.
The deal is, is what I think, and I'm really pleased with what's coming out of this. I know that when you bring some of this up, it came through kind of this form water conversation. It's, and it brings up.
It's, and it brings up questions that people have. People sitting in those seats at the planning and zoning and Cinda can test it. They've had those over the years. What's this done? People are out there building, they're doing construction and building these deals or having the same questions. Are we, what is this doing? And I think that it would be really short-sighted not to get into this, this pressure testing, very, things like that. I mean, just, you know, so that you have that database and it'll, it'll actually come up all around the county. It'll somewhat substitute for this study thing we're talking about. In other words, you get the same results, the end results is what we want.
The old adage, you know, you can't manage what you can't measure.
Yeah, and, yeah.
And so, and oftentimes with development, especially with the larger here in the valley, that there's a, you know, people don't want to see a lot of growth here. Or, or there's a high percentage of people and water is often the place to go to. And if you don't have the data, it's hard to.
Right.
Give them any information that says otherwise.
Yeah, absolutely. I think this is a perfect situation.
And I do, but I also want to just put out there that IDWR is monitoring our wells. It's not that we don't have any data, we do have data. And what they're saying is we're fine. And so I, I totally concur, you know, adding to that in the future is great, but I.
Just continued doing what they're doing, but more of it. I think that could, that could be a request from the county to IDWR.
This kind of, this kind of brings up, just trust us, right? You know, so what we're saying is we're going from that, just, you know, from saying, well, no, IDWR says we're fine or Art Water Resources, to saying, well, okay, let's substantiate some of that. And we're not new in that game, apparently lots of people are doing it. So it's just a smart thing for the county to be doing is to take us, okay, we want to have questions, answers for those people.
Federal, DEQ and IDWR are short-staffed, they're really short-staffed. So they're going to be focusing on Eastern Snake Plain Aquifer, Mountain Home, water management area. And when they see areas like this, it'll be low on the list, but I think it's a good thing.
Might be able to get some voluntary.
Well, that was my question. If you've got all these different public water systems out there, we're going, already going to monitor some of those. If you're down the other end of the valley, you don't have one, I think that would still be a great place to monitor. So maybe some private folks might want to say, hey, I'll donate, you know, access to my well for that study.
And maybe we could have the newspaper do some kind of a, who wants to volunteer.
Who, who wouldn't volunteer their way?
Can you retrofit these transducers into that or you have to do it when you're drilling?
The small, really it's going down with the pump, it's attached to the pump column, it's not the well. So you could, when you pull the pump.
Pull the pump and, yeah.
There are, oftentimes it's hard to get them in six-inch wells with, I mean, you probably could get them in there, but better on a new well construction, but I, I think.
Clear Creek might have, you know, an extra water supply with all of the RVs they've got there.
Clear Creek is on a sand point. They've never drilled a well at Clear Creek.
What?
Yeah, Sand Point is a brass, well, you know what it is, they just basically drive in the ground. Drive it in there to get water. And you start pumping and that's what they've survived on for forever.
Quite a few systems like that, I'm working with the Mountain View RV Park on the way out to Tamarack right now. And they have a hand-dug well that DEQ's all over Old Bow right now. We're trying to look at options for them right now.
Oops.
Yeah, they got a little ahead.
Ahead of themselves, yes.
It's interesting, my house I live in had a hand-dug well and it was built in 1904. It's three feet around, it's rock lined through the bottom and it's 11 feet deep. And it was the best water in the world. But in February, when nothing was melting, it would dry, it would run dry. So after about three years of that, we did, we drilled another well, we've abandoned that well. But I've kept it because I can monitor the groundwater just looking down in that well. And there's times that it's like this far from coming over the top of the ground, you know? And other times it's, it's grew down at the bottom, interesting.
I think mapping the, Cinda and I talked, you know, mapping all the public drinking water systems and then regionalizing the systems as much as you can because there's going to be a big push through the county for these one-off, these isolated systems. When there's another, when North Lake or another public drinking water system is close, making the developers go ahead and connect to those regional systems versus getting too many private, little tiny private systems throughout, throughout the county. I think that could be trouble.
And I think on the public ones, I agree with that, it's going to be difficult to get like a jug to do that because they, they've drilled with a specific number of, of lots in mind. So it'll be interesting to work with those types of systems to see if they're willing to allow partnerships or not.
Like, John, Mountain Ranch and Jug Handle is. I think in the future, I've worked, I help both of those communities but, or systems. But in the future, it benefits everybody to connect, connect the infrastructure from an emergency response perspective. More customers are better, they can share in the costs and.
No, it's, it's an interesting discussion. I really appreciate Tim coming in here on this one and it's, it'd make you a little more work, Cinda, I'm sorry about that, but.
Are you, can you take that on? Coordinated the conversation or do you need?
Delegate. No, I'll work with Karen to create this inventory and then we can work towards, you know, with the other thing we talked about.
And I'm assuming all of these public systems are licensed, so she could use a lot of that information for the GIS part.
You said DEQ has a great GIS and.
Yeah, their compliance and GIS people are really good. They have all that data available, so I think you just incorporate it in and have it.
Maybe we just, you know, reach out and see who wants to participate and.
That's what I'm asking, I guess, do you want the commissioners to write a letter? You know, coming from the commissioners might be a good way to go at the end of the day when you reach out to all of these things. You know, we're trying to collaborate within the county and we could all sign a letter of request. When you get there, let me know and we can.
And I think we need to evolve the soil conservation in on this too. See what kind of information they have, because I know they've done this in the past. And we might be kicking a horse that's already been kicked, so, you know, let's combine all that data. Remember Greg, Greg, I can't, shoot, that's what, that was his summer project was well monitoring in Valley County in the 80s, 82.
This county is similar to my topic I gave this weekend was, you know, it was Boise Chamber Metro that I was talking to in Sun Valley, but all the heavy hitters from the valley were down there. And I asked him, you know, why does Idaho Power do such a good job of planning for water supply on the Snake River? There's one entity that's responsible for that, one entity that's responsible for power. Guess how many water, public water systems and wastewater systems there are in Canyon, Elmore.
Wow.
Ada County, 300.
Wow.
And all these different agencies and everyone's going, doing their job, nobody's collaborating right now.
Right, that's kind of key.
The same issue with broadband.
Yeah, exactly, same deal.
Yeah.
No one, no one entity is taking.
Right.
There's a push down in that area to have some kind of a regional water authority or advisory group that looks out for these key issues for the valley. So everybody down in the valley, because the private company Suez manages the water, everyone just assumes they're doing long-term planning, not so much.
A good point.
We could at least get it started and then move towards that regionalization.
Yeah. So what I'm wondering is, do we need a motion to authorize this? Or do you want to just table this and kind of see what?
Why don't I just do it?
You come back and then, yeah.
I'll just start with the inventory and then come back with a letter. And as we get through our ordinance changes and comp plan revisions, we'll insert this type of, of thing into that. And then I'll reread our source water protection plan that we have in our ordinance. Wellhead protection plan. What we have.
You know, the stuff going around Donley, that's a perfect example. There's so much growth around Donley right now. The question is, are they going to be annexed into the city? Are they going to start their own system? Are they going to?
Yeah.
Right, Donley, they just built a new well.
Yeah, City of Donley.
Did they put any transducers in it or?
We did that, I would hope so, yeah, I would have to say yes, but I have to check.
And I know Cascade's probably looking at New Well. You know, so I, I think that we can work towards this.
And there'll be, there'll be another one with, I think there was 500 units planned somewhere around Donley, just to the west of Donley. I forget what that is, but.
The Coach Crossing one or the one to the north?
To the north.
Oh, to the north, okay.
To the north, yeah. They'll, the city, city or North Lake will require them.
So we can start getting this done.
Okay.
Thank you for the.
Thanks for coming in, yes.
Thank you, Cinda.
It's good to know we've got guys like you around.
Yeah, I'm here, so I've been doing it a long time. Anytime you are interested, have me come in.
All right, thank you, sir. Thanks, Tim. Okay, our next agenda item is a presentation from Melissa on programming. And then you got an action item, so whatever you want to do first.
I'll do the presentation first.
Okay.
I have Dr. Mo Ma joining me via Zoom.
You need the screen?
I do, yeah.
Is that an HDMI hookup?
It is, it's not going to work.
Take the HDMI out of that one and connect directly to her. And Doug can give you access down there.
Okay. I always get a little like nervous with adapters and HDMI is communicating and talking. So we'll see if the magic happens.
I believe that laptop does have Zoom, the public laptop, Melissa has Zoom if you, if it doesn't work on your computer.
Okay. I usually like to come in and test it out, you know, like when I did the presentation up on campus, I like snuck into that room and made sure everybody is working. Here we go, good.
Like Pat's on already?
Yeah, it, it got us all lined up.
Pat, can you hear us?
Yes, good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, good to see you.
Thank you very much for joining us, thank you for the time to have a little snapshot of extension programming. A little more formal than I know.
Before we do that, I'm going to give you my microphone because you're going to have. Not going to be able to hear you, you've got a soft voice.
I do have a soft.
Need some more water?
Thank you. So I'm Melissa Hamilton. I'm a little more formal today than I normally are because I just came from annual conference. So I got this jazzy uniform shirt. I know. And there's also a new commissioner and so I wanted to, you know, make an introduction.
Oh, wow.
And so I'm here today representing the University of Idaho Extension Office for Valley County. And I'm going to give you a little snapshot of our programs and what we do. And this presentation was adapted from our advisory council presentation. I have a committee of people that I communicate with and give them updates throughout the year. Usually it's one big annual meeting and then a check-in somewhere around the six-month marker just to make sure we're on track and, and serving community need. Because ultimately that is our goal, is to be responsive to community need and help you all do some problem solving and be responsive to, to, to local challenges. So the, the focus areas in our county is 4H youth development, community development, agriculture and horticulture. And if there's different subject areas that come to the extension office that are outside that scope or if it's outside my, my breadth of knowledge, we have a network of professionals. And there's 42 professionals around the state, at least 42, because there's at least one of me in every county across the state of Idaho and there's at least one of me in every county across the nation. And so extension is a really, really wonderful network of knowledge and expertise that I can pull on. And I reach out to others, find the information and then, you know, give those to the stakeholders of Valley County. I had this tested, there we go. So I'm here representing our office, but I could not do it without the support and talent of the people in our office. And so we are fortunate to have a full-time 4H program coordinator, Allison Stats. She's been in that position for several years. And we have a full-time administrative assistant, Jill Casal. Our AmeriCorps and 4H staff right now, we have some ARPA grant funds through the 4H program. And so Rebecca Levandowski, which was our 4H, oh, she was our AmeriCorps position last year. She has continued on to, to serve the office in Valley County through this 4H program assistant type position. But that is temporary and it's grant-funded. And the amount of work that's coming out of the 4H office, the 4H program in our office is just astounding right now. And so we are, we are very busy. And we have Dylan Porter and she is the PCEI AmeriCorps position that we've had for many, several years now, probably going on about five out of our office. And she continues to serve more regular after-school programming to the, to the community, specifically in the Donley area. And then she's also in an exploratory. I, I've challenged her to explore that if there's any way we can enhance or improve early childhood development to be able to reach out to some of the local daycares and preschools to offer them some programming. And so she's been working with Darcy on the West Central Mountains Economic Development Council and her ELAC committee and just listening in and, and trying to serve that community as well. So that's kind of our pilot program this year with the staff. And so I apologize for not having as many pictures as I would like in a presentation. This is very wordy and very numbers-based. You know, presentations are ongoing and so I will work on improving it and putting some more pictures in because the picture is what really gets your heart. And so there's, in 2021, there was eight 4H clubs in Valley County and the current year-round youth and adult participants is at 105. That's in comparison to 60 last year. And so that's a significant increase. So when I say that we are busier than I've ever seen the office before and serving more people than we've ever served, we are going for it. And so that, that's different when you say year-round youth and adult participants because they are participating in the club format. And the club format is something where you, you form those deeper relationships. It's different than just an after-school program where, oh, that was fun and I met with that person once per week for, you know, a few months. Things that are valuable about that club format is that it's not necessarily so much about how many kids are in it, but what's the impact and the impact? And there's studies that have shown that the positive influence of multiple adults on youth's lives will create better citizens in the future. And so kids pull what they need from different adults and having kids be in a club has more positive adult influence in their lives. And clubs can range anything from animal livestock to, we have a shooting sports and we have a sewing quilting club and there's a lot of STEM activity with drone programming. And so our 4H youth leader, Allison, is, is really being a leader with that drone technology and doing some pretty innovative STEM programming here in Valley County. And they've done summer, it was a spring break drone camp and they're going to be doing some summer camp activities. And they've really increased the short-term enrollment, enrollment programs, which is, they're calling them step programs. And so those include the leather crafts, junior master gardeners, archery, quilting. And she's really pulling from, from local leaders and local volunteers that want to commit time to the youth. And they say, I have this talent and this skill and I'm willing to offer it in a class. And then she's coordinating those events to, to take that talent, take that skill, put it into, you know, the community and see who's interested, who, who wants to be involved. So a lot of things are happening. With the community development program, I have been part of a tri-state program called the We Can Network and it's Montana, Wyoming and Idaho. And I've been a leader doing the peer learning network. And the peer learning network was established shortly, I mean, I guess maybe it was nine months. And the peer learning network was established shortly, I mean, I guess maybe it was nine months after COVID happened. And the idea was, is that, you know, people were dealing with things in a very, very quick, rapid, dynamic environment, and they were also not meeting as regularly as they would to find those ideas and be responsive. And so the peer leader network allowed for people to come together and learn about what's happening in other people's communities, how they're, how they're solving those challenges, and communicate best practices. And so it's a virtual meetup. One of the biggest outcomes we had of that was the tri-state housing summit, which was really well-attended and a really great event. And so we're talking more about how can we bring people together around some of these big community issues to provide people solution-based ideas and not just places where people, you know, essentially kind of chew on the challenges over and over again, if that makes sense. And so I'm, I'm happy to be part of that group. And always looking to onboard more people to that because I think that the more ideas and voices and communities we have at the table, the more robust the conversation is. I am picking up on a study that we did with the Cascade Mobility Team about six years now. We said we were going to do it five, at the five-year mark, but it's been, you know, crazy couple of years, and we didn't think we'd get an accurate read on, on the data with, during the pandemic or the active, you know, pandemic. And so we're going to be doing bike and pedestrian counts throughout the city of Cascade, and that's going to be giving the city some data and some tools about the ownership of their public infrastructure. And so when they are applying to seek some grant money or, or make improvements or make decisions about how they're going to utilize that space, they'll have some data about how the community is using it. And so I'll be partnering with Horizons Group. And they're such a critical partner because they really can mobilize people and plug in those volunteers. And in the past, the state park system was, was also a key partner in doing these counts. And I'm, there's a different change in leadership, and so I'm not sure what their contributions will be to this. But really putting that out there and hoping to get people onboard to, to help do these counts. Also launching Cascade Arts Walk, and that's through the University of Idaho Extension Innovation Grant. And so I received a small grant that I applied with the mayor of Cascade to do, and also Horizons, to do a Cascade Arts Walk. And the idea is, and this has been the idea for a long time, since I've, I've, even before I've been at the table, but it's about, you know, creating this, this gravity and getting people out of their cars and getting people to walk around the community because the more that people are walking or they're biking, the slower they're going and the more likely they're, they're, oh, let's stop here for lunch, or let's go buy a little trinket. Oh, my gosh, I didn't know this ice cream store, you know, was here. Oh, they have T-shirts. And so to kind of, you know, bolster economic activity through creating more, like a vibrancy. And so the Cascade Arts Walk is going to be helping contribute to, to all the wonderful things that are happening in Cascade. We Can Network Bootcamp, I recently worked with the West Central Mountains Leadership Academy through this bootcamp, which was part of that tri-state network. It was an awesome bootcamp. Excited to see how that might have assisted or aided the Leadership Academy with selecting a, a program and, and hoping they reach out, I mean, reach out to me in the future to be able to be local support. I did a diversity learning circle program, gosh, it was maybe two years ago, maybe a year ago. And there's some other private industries reaching out saying, hey, could you do that for my staff or my team? And so I say potential because that's not pinned down yet. But nice to see that there's an interest and, and nice to be a resource for the community in that capacity. Continue to support some committees, including the West Central Mountains Food Coalition, Regional Arts District Committee, and I didn't put on there, but the Economic Development Council. Have a more active role than I had before with that group. For agriculture, I've shared and continue to share cultivating success programs. That's mostly moved through a webinar series format during the pandemic. And there's some conversations about changing that format now that we're, you know, moving around the world a little bit more in person. Potentially going to offer a poultry workshop in Valley County, and then also potentially working on doing a farm tour. And so I do those occasionally. The last time I did one was in the fall of 2020, and that was a farm tour, but also pinning down the details of that. And on an annual basis, I've, I've always offered pesticide recertification credits, and that has also moved to a virtual format since pandemic. So there is, there's pros and cons because what's, what's happened in extension is that programs that were once so local are now offered, if they're offered virtually statewide, and not only statewide, multi-state and international. And so some extension programs have really, they've reached audiences farther than we've ever reached before because the, the virtual delivery has allowed for more content to reach local audiences. And so before, maybe we don't have a family consumer sciences person in Valley County, but they can take a class that can connect them to an expert on how do I do local canning? Or how do I dry food? Or how do I do food preservation in general? They can connect to this amazing webinar that I was referencing that has international audiences now on raising goats and sheep. And so extension is, is, is in a pivotal, it's, you know, it's in a transitional time. But we all are, and so we are all kind of processing the pros and cons and how we're going to move forward and what, what we have available to us. And so this is interesting to share because in the past, the pesticide recertification credits were always local, and then they moved virtual. But we will be doing a local workshop, and I'm working with Steve Anderson on that. Victory Garden Series, that's an online beginner course. I do that in odd years, as well as the Advanced Master Gardener Course. And then in the even years, I offer a Master Gardener Course. This year, we did a hybrid class, which was in-person as well as online with content experts from around the state sharing. It was more technical and had more hands-on than it ever has been before. And so I think that is a winning combo, more content, more hands-on. And then we'll be planning our summer plant clinics, and you'll have a chance to go out into the community and, and see the master gardeners at some of these plant clinics and, and interact with them. We primarily have, we've changed the format where we've decided to go where people are, instead of meet them where they're at, rather than expect them to come to us. And I find that when you go to where people are, it tends to be a little better. And so we have partnered with the local farmers markets, and we go out and we do tabling events at the farmers markets, both in Donley and McCall. And then we have targeted some businesses and some festivals in Cascade where we have plant clinics to make sure we have all those audiences served. This is the AmeriCorps. I, I had mentioned that she primarily does consistent after-school programming, and then she's doing the preschool programs. And she just recently had a leg injury, and so we're pivoting away from how she's going to serve the county. And it's probably going to look more through story map assistance for the West Central Mountains Food Coalition and doing some things where she can not be as mobile, where she can sit and serve because she has pretty significant leg injury. Yeah, I know.
That's our job, sit and serve.
Oh, so this, like I said before, was adapted from my, my steering committee slides. And so these are some of the questions that I asked them to give me feedback. And then the action item that you mentioned earlier is specifically tied to this topic of transportation. And so I'm hoping that we might be able to take a few minutes or, you know, some substantial conversation around this, this concept. And this is why I've invited Pat to be here with me today, just because he has a bigger, broader view of what that looks like in other counties, and I'm hoping he'll be able to share. But essentially, with the Cooperative Extension Office, you know, the, the university provides the human capital staff, which is me, and then the counties provide office support. And so office support includes, you know, a physical location for office, the utilities, phone, transportation, staff, budget, money, monies in the budget for travel, professional organizations, whatnot, things that you would have to support office. And so there's been some challenges for me to be able to, to get reimbursed or to utilize transportation offered by the county. And so I don't, I don't, what I've been doing up until this point is I've just been subsidizing the transportation part to do my job. And I just reached a point where I was like, I don't want to do this anymore. And the specific challenges are sometimes where, and I don't want to really, there's just, there's logistics that don't work with the way that the county structured their transportation policy with how my life is. And so with picking up the car here, then bringing it, you know, to McCall, which is where I reside in, in the county, I also have commitments to my family where I have to pick them up from daycare or this or that. So it just, it becomes very difficult. And, and I had mentioned this during a department head report, and I was going to work with Dave before he left, and then he had encouraged me to make this meeting. And so I, I guess, you know, this concept or this idea, I would love some discussion. But, but what I'm requesting is that there is money in the current budget, and that money is there simply in case that there isn't a county car available and reimbursement is needed. And so I guess my question is, can I use that money that's in the budget that's there as, as, it's there in case it's needed, but I'm, I'm wondering if I can use it to reimburse transportation costs where a county car might not have been able to be utilized.
I think that's totally reasonable. My understanding of the policy is, is that if a county car is not reasonable, then you have to use your own vehicle, you get reimbursed for that mileage. But it's mileage, you know, to and from a meeting or someplace you have to be, whether it's in Boise or, you know, Cascade or Donley or whatever, you know, it will replace that mileage. The situation, I think, and I don't know if you've ever used that $500, have you ever claimed it?
Well, we've used it if a county car was already being lent out to another employee and, and the, the county transportation pool didn't have a car available.
Another car available.
That's why it's in there, is like, it's like a buffer in case that scenario happens. I guess I, I have a different scenario where I haven't been able to, to ask for a county car because of family situations or family commitments and needs.
My concern is this, and I don't know how we overcome it, and I'm glad Pat's on the phone. You're not an employee. And that's the weird, you know, situation that we reside in is then we're allowing a non-employee of the county, you know, I mean, to, to get mileage reimbursement. Same thing with the AmeriCorps. And so I don't know what they do in other counties. I mean, should that come from the extension agency at the college, that mileage reimbursement, because you're their employee, and then somehow it's added on to our bill? Or how do we manage that? Because that's what we don't want to start, is providing something, you know, unique to your department that we need to replicate in another area then.
Pat, were you able to hear that question?
Oh, you've got my mic.
Yeah.
And I'm not talking very well.
But Pat, is that transportation aspect of doing business in counties, is that something that the county is, is providing as an office expense?
And I think that's really a pretty reasonable request because she is kind of going all over the county, serving different folks. The issue that we ran in two years ago was folks that took a county rig to Boise and, for a meeting, and then stopped and did grocery shopping and did some clothes shopping. And we're, we're getting that mileage included in the reimbursement. Does that make sense? Even though it wasn't very much, the issue is people say, how come there's a county rig parked at McDonald's? Or Costco or something? That's where the public really does come unglued when they see those kind of situations. But I don't have, I don't, yeah. So Pat, how do you handle, well, you guys wouldn't have that issue because honestly, what happens is, like I said earlier, people are saying, why is there a Valley County rig parked at Costco or Fred Meyer? Those were the kind of calls and concerns we got. Even though maybe we're not paying that mileage now, it's still the concept that the public says, wait a minute, why is this person not at work? Or why are they here shopping in a county rig? Those are the kind of things that we would have to deal with. Yeah.
Can I, can I have a, ask a question, please? If we, Melissa can help us with that or Pat, but. So this is kind of like, it's come down to like a personal vehicle use versus, say, an official vehicle. Okay, so where, do you need an official vehicle? Or do you, can your operation work off of reimbursement, say, for personal? That's, so then it gets into what passed, you know, you get into this deal where if you go to Boise for a meeting, then you basically get a computer-generated reimbursement for the mileage, official miles. And it doesn't matter what you drive your other vehicle, you know, on your own personal deal. Like if I come to a P&amp;Z meeting, I got 25 miles. That's what I got paid for. Didn't matter what I did other than that. Now, does that fit into your operation? Do you need the official, say, versus reimbursement?
So.
And, yeah.
I'm going to go back to some historical knowledge, but I believe when Barbara Brody was in this position, that she actually drove a county rig back and forth, you know, to her house, back to the job or whatnot. So she had a, a car that was with her. And, and, and that does actually make sense because I do programming in Donley and McCall. And so I, I just look at it that if I'm, I'm doing that commute anyway, I don't mind using my personal car to go off and do that programming. And so that's, that's not something I'm worried about getting subsidized for. I guess not subsidized, reimbursed for. But I, I'm. But, um, I, I'm not really wanting to go that full scale. I'm really just looking and wanting to have reimbursement for mileage in my, my own car.
For your own personal vehicle. So that's kind of what you're asking for, for us to work out a resolution to the use of your personal vehicle for business essentially, for program trips.
Yeah.
And, and is the 500 enough?
Yeah.
I don't think it will be, but there, I'm, I'm trying to, yeah, I'm trying to.
Especially with gas.
Yeah.
Um, I, I can go back into the budget and see what was in the line item before we went into the other policy, because we were using that reimbursement process. And I can see what kind of reimbursement our office was utilizing. Um, I think that, that would be something I can do as an action item from, from this meeting.
Yeah, I would definitely come back with a budget request, double it or whatever.
We had, my apologies for interrupting, Mr. Chairman, we had $2,500 budgeted. I'm just referring back to 2016.
Yeah.
And we've got it down to five, what did, what did we do last year, 500?
Well, I don't think I really used that, especially last year or the year before.
If you don't use it and we see it zeroed out or never used, it has a tendency to come off the budget.
Well, I mean, it's there, like I said, it's been for backup. Um, and, and it is an item that I do discuss with Doug during our budget discussions. Um, and the 2,500 was supporting all of the staff. Um, so it was supporting my, my mileage reimbursement, Allison's mileage reimbursement. And we, that was pretty much it. We didn't have the other people. Um, I put AmeriCorps on there simply because that person is making like pennies. I'm just going to say pennies. Um, and so rather than them drive their personal vehicle down here to Cascade to pick up a car from Cascade, to go back to Donnelly to teach a program, come back to Cascade to deliver the car, to go get their car and go back to Donnelly. It's like, wow, like.
It's not good.
Wouldn't there be just, and, and, and with the increasing numbers of people driving that highway, I don't know why we'd want the additional congestion on the road. Um, but right now she's also using her personal vehicle to get to and from programming. And she's not getting reimbursed. So she's following in with the culture of our office. It's just use your own car because trying to get a county car is too, it's difficult. So, um, I just, I just feel like there's, I, I would say that I'm proud of the work I do in Valley County.
And you should be.
Thank you.
Well, I, I think we'll support you 100% on this one. So I think we've got a miscommunication that's happened somewhere along the line because, you know, I don't come in and get a county rig to go to a Boise meeting. I'm going to leave from my house and go and save myself 15 miles. I mean, it's just, I don't have the time. And you get reimbursed for that mileage. I mean, maybe you're just not requesting it enough.
Okay, well, if I, if I am understanding it, that that's a possibility, then, then I will move forward.
And then I think we need to look at that. If it's $500, we need to look at adding more to that. My big thing is we're, I don't want to pay employees to drive from McCall down here to go to work every day. That's not part of that. That's expected of your job. And everybody has to drive here to go to work. I mean, we go down that trail, we, we spend a lot of money. And we revisited this quite a few years back when we had some department heads that were taking a county rig home at night. And thought, this is not the way to do this because we had too many public comments about, why is this vehicle at the bar?
There's tax implications to that too. That's what keeps coming up as far as even the county road department. If they drive a county vehicle to work, then that becomes taxable event for them. And I just want to make sure we don't do that to Melissa either. Doug, in your opinion, is there any issues with any taxable events? That's been raised in the past with these other situations. If Melissa uses her own car, there's nothing that we can't reimburse and we don't have to claim that. Brian Oakey is the one that had brought up the other issues.
I mean, if she's, I, from what I'm hearing, the proposal that Melissa's presenting is to get mileage reimbursed for attending specific programs, not commuting every day to work.
No. And I never did that before either.
And I think, I think our policy was set up for people that are emergency responders, like our road supervisor, those people used to be able to take that rig home, their county rig home, because they were on call 24/7. But because Jeff lives south of the road department, if he has a call north of Cascade, he'll stop by, get a county rig and go. If the problem is south, staying down around, he can go from his house down to Round Valley, figure out the situation and get reimbursed for that mileage.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, if that's, if that's the scenario, that's, I'll just do mileage reimbursement.
So one other question, could we, could we maybe simplify that a little bit by putting a budget item into whatever we, we do to the university? And just have them work that travel through that? In other words, we would.
The issue is like what Sherry brought up, but she is not a county employee.
I know, but.
And, but I think we can, it's a gray area that I think would hold up in court one way or the other.
The deal is if we're required by As County to help with transportation, why not just help by giving them a, just paying that into their program at the university level? And then Melissa works directly through the university for that sort of thing. And it really doesn't work here, except that they come to us for a request each year for that travel budget part of it.
I think that's what Pat is.
And we're doing that now. I think we're doing that now.
Is that what we're doing, okay?
Pat was saying that if there was something written into the budget in the county and you'd prefer the university to manage that component, that just not for the whole budget, because we talked about it before. He's saying just for that line item, that I could get the money transferred to a university account and then they would process the transportation.
So I'm thinking about that on the liability end of things. So if we're using your personal car for work, we have to be added to your insurance? As an additional, and it's an additional pay. So I would prefer that the university take care of all of that liability wise and.
We just, we just pay the university and just the record, yeah.
And let, you know, the university handle all of that.
So then your claims would go to the U of I and to the county.
For transportation, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I'd ask if you were even insured as an employee on the county cars.
I've asked.
Did find out you are, if you're driving the county and doing county business. But I would be more concerned if you're driving your own personal vehicle or work. And then who is on there for liability purposes?
I don't know. Your own liability would cover that.
Not if she's on a work time. If she's going to, if she is using her personal car and she's going to a meeting and someone is injured, it's a county expense.
So Sherry, does that follow through to all of us, the rest of us? I mean, if Mr. Ashbrook goes to Boise with his own vehicle, are we concerned about the liability?
I think I asked Doug that right up front, but we're employees. We're employed by the county, she's not. And therefore, liability purpose wise, we just want to cover ourselves.
And I think our policy does that now, but I want to hear Doug's on this one. Because I think getting the money to the U of I and letting them handle your mileage reimbursement. We'd take care of it. I think we'd take care of it easy. And we, if it's, if it's not 500, if it's a thousand or it's $2,000, whatever, then I think we, you know, it's just, okay, we need to watch that line item every year.
I think if I'm hearing you correctly, that's your, we're kind of in agreement that maybe we try to transfer money to their pot. Let them be responsible for the management of it.
It makes it a lot more clean.
Yeah, right.
It just really does, honestly.
And I do recognize extension, being cooperative extension, there's all these different pots of money that make it happen. And so I appreciate the county being part of making that happen. And I understand that it, it can get complicated too.
It'd be simplified if you was working out of one office for your travel.
Well then, is that going to work, Doug? Request for reimbursement, we come through the U of I notice.
If that's how the commissioners would choose to fund that, yes, we would have an expense line in our budget. I guess it would be just an additional contribution that we would pay the University of Idaho. And then the University of Idaho would expend that, those funds as they determined were appropriate.
That makes, well, cleans it up, I think a little bit.
Pat, is that what you were presenting and, and is that all sound good? That's my understanding of the conversation. And if possible, I wouldn't, but being that the AmeriCorps is also not a county employee, I, I would like to use some of the funds to support that position's transportation if that position continues to move forward and, and/or just from this point forward, you know, to do that. And so I'll put this, um, additional expense into the budget for the next year. But as of right now, would I be able to set up that fund with current money in the budget? Or would we not be able to do that?
Okay, we all good?
We are, so that, is the action item?
Transfer funds over to the university.
And can I do that in this 2021, 2022 budget cycle?
Adam, there's $500 in the budget right now. So you can just request an invoice and.
Just slip it, yeah.
Okay, so look, I'll go, I'll move forward getting that established. Yeah. Okay.
Oh, let's give her a hand.
And, and I did request funding from Pat. Because I said, this is kind of a capacity where Amber's representing the university. And so would you support the travel needed to be at the Western Governance Association? I don't want to pull that out of my county budget. And Pat said, yes, I will support that travel because it is on behalf of the university. But I was there representing both, but it was more of me representing the university. And so anyway, I, I'm always respectful of where, what hat do I have on and how should this be supportive?
Right.
I watched it, it was great.
Oh, good, yay. Thank you.
Yeah, we're pretty happy with it, Pat. I think it's turned out really well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
As well we can for them.
Okay, thank you everyone for your time.
All right. Thank you, have a great day.
We take a five minute break.
Yep.
So.
You all right back, Jeff?
Okay. So Melissa, and, um, I almost took the master gardening thing.
Oh, I wish you did. It's been, it was just such a fantastic year to take it.
It's just, it's just one of those things where you're trying to figure out what to cram in, right? And I love gardening, but I just wondered, what does that do? I mean, you know, what, really, what, what role do you play and that sort of thing? Do you, you master gardeners, where do they go? And what do they do to support community from that small gardening standpoint?
So I, I've had this, um, I'm going to bring the mic back, but I, I've had this kind of resurgence of master gardeners wanting to like give back to projects. Which I think is great because it blends that community development and that horticulture program. And I always like it when things like fall under one umbrella. And so when you said, what do they do? They have 30 hours of service that they have to give back at the end of the course. It's just part of the design of the program. And so, um, right now I have them out tealing public outreach, uh, doing hands-on activities at the market for people, um, being there to answer questions. And so people will bring in a plant, say, what's this? Or bring in a pest challenge. And so they're there kind of like running a, like a Q and A clinic for like, how can we help you in your garden? Or what challenges are you having? But I've also had them go and, and clean up the library, um, you know, the, the front display area of the library at Cascade. We talked about, we did an installation of the irrigation system for the community garden over at the Nemeadow School. And so we put in drip line for their community vets. And then I have a certain amount of committees helping with those community projects. Like there was a bunch of master gardeners on the committees for the Meadows Community Garden. And there's been talk several years in McCall about community garden. So I, I, you know, people are like, what do we do first? I'm like, we form a committee. So then you have people's worth of effort. And, um, and so I've been wanting to plug master gardeners into that committee.
And looking, to me, I, I see this local, small gardening effort that's going all around. It's been a pretty, pretty neat part of our community. We have the farmer's markets, we have all this stuff that's happening and it kind of evolves from that kind of a way. And that's, I mean, tend to focus on the large agriculture, like Mr. Ashbrook, you know, folks like that. But the, you know, it's, it's kind of neat to see that. And your forage program is amazing. I couldn't believe you've got eight groups now in Valley County. I mean, that's pretty impressive, really.
Well, we talked to Allison here a while back about getting her some more permanent help through the budget for next year. I don't know if we can do anything this year, but I think it's coming because of the numbers that she's dealing with.
Yeah.
We got to do something.
She's got two interns for the summer.
Yeah, so we're, we kind of, hope that'll work until we can push it next year.
Going to write that into the budget request for this year. And I'm hoping to write it in for 32 hours. Just because it provides some stability for that. Because the whole, the whole thing with the 19 hours is that trying to get someone that's in that position that's going to stay, it doesn't really address the issue. And so if you're at 32 hours and at least we can work towards this sustainability aspect of someone being, being able to actually live and work here and, and continue on for years to come in our office.
Right, right. Okay, we got to move on. We're going to run out of time today.
We'll visit more at another time.
Jeff, come on up. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is a sign of cooperative agreement for a project for an intersection improvement at Smith Ferry. And you guys got all that in your packet? And ITD is going to pay most of it and the homeowners is going to pay the rest?
Yep, sounds like, uh, $4,485.76 be paid by the state and $1,000 from the HOA. And I believe the HOA is already paid. Correct, Doug?
We have received the payment from the homeowners association.
So as soon as this is signed, I'll get it back to ITD. Basically, this is, our labor is nothing on this. This is just the cost of the signs.
And then we're, it'll be our sign after that to maintain.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah.
Give me just a minute. This fit in, uh, just similar to what we did there with that one we put up in our neighborhood. I mean, where you, you're just going out for cooperation to get those things around the county.
So to give you some background on this real quick, the homeowners of Smith Ferry got together with ITD and us, um, to put up a 45 mile an hour, kind of like you see coming into Cascade or going into McCall. We'll have. We'll have one on each side of Smith Ferry down there just to remind people. And these are proven to work. You'll, you'll see brake lights come on all the time. When they'll come speeding into town and all of a sudden that sign hits them too fast, brake lights. They're, they're proven to work.
Yeah, I just, it's kind of particularly interesting because we got, in our neighborhood, we just put one of those in. We bought it, the neighborhood bought it and to Jeff, he installed it, which I really would like to put a little farther up the street, but.
That, that's easy to do. It's already put together. I gotta dig another hole.
Anyway, so I had a neighbor, another neighbor said, God, that's great, but we need another one. Wouldn't the county put another ones up at the other end? And, and I tried to explain, no, but said, well, yeah, we pay taxes. Well, wouldn't they, you know, and so.
Here it comes.
Anyway, you've got, but it's great to just kind of let people know that that kind of stuff's out there. And that we do work with the communities.
Yeah.
Cause I think they do work.
Yeah, we've got, we've got three of them on Warren wagon.
Yeah.
Here another month, I'll have five of them out here on Warm Lake Highway. Got the one in Carefree now. It's, they're coming.
And incidentally, like the one we put in our neighborhood is just a flasher. So it's like a fraction of the cost of one, like Jeff's talking about, it's like a third.
Yeah.
Something like that.
So are you starting to put in your budget replacement of these? Because first time somebody kicks one out.
It's just in my general budget. There, we've got them on, anything over $2,500 is on our insurance. So the big ones that are $4,800, $5,000, they're on our insurance.
Oh, okay.
If they do get smashed.
Oh, that is a good question.
The, the smaller ones like we put up in Carefree, they were, that was what, $1,800, I think?
I think 18, 15, 15 actually.
ITD got a smoking deal on these and I gotta figure out how they got that discount because I really want it.
Okay, so I need a motion then to approve this cooperative agreement for project A020.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agreement.
Move to second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Jeff, you agreed in any roads yet?
I don't, I don't see that we've received it in yet, so.
This is the wrong one, this is right away. Give me the other one.
Yeah, you need to sign that too.
But we haven't voted, isn't that the next one?
Oh, oh, sorry.
So one of the downsides of those less expensive ones is if you get destroyed, the county gets to pay for them.
These things are tough.
And so, but the deal is, is somebody destroys the one we have, there's no insurance.
Right.
There's no, you know.
So is the county on the hook for that or is the HOA on it?
They're ours. Just like the rest of our street signs, we replace $2,000 worth of street signs and road signs every year because people steal them.
Yeah.
But these ones that you're going into agreements with the HOA, the HOA is buying them, we do all the replacement?
They're ours.
They're there, yeah.
As soon as I get this one in.
It's yours.
Serial number off of it, it'll go on our asset list and on the insurance.
So moving forward, when, when people talk about these things, Jeff, how do you, how do we deal with that fact that the, say, I paid 15? I think we paid 1,500 or thereabout. So, but if that one gets destroyed and it has to be replaced, that's $1,500 out of county budget.
Yep.
So is there?
You can't budget for unforeseen's.
Yeah, it's just.
Well, I can't budget for $8 a gallon.
Right.
And it's 460.
Basically, basically only hope is to make a case on it. Get it out of a car accident.
It's nickel and dime money, but.
Yeah.
The cheaper ones like we put up for you are pretty easily replaced.
Yeah.
I'm questioning though, again, I'm gonna ask a different way. How many HOAs are we dealing with where taxpayer dollars is going to be at risk to replace these? Why are we accepting responsibility instead of an HOA?
Because they're going on our right of way.
On their behalf?
We can go back to the HOA and say, they get destroyed, you replace them.
I'm asking, I, I think we need a policy around that somewhere because you literally could accept 100 of these and have a really bad snow year and they get all hit with, you know, snow blades. And we could be on the hook for a large dollar expenditure for taxpayer dollars.
You'd have, snow doesn't.
And we didn't.
I think we have more damage from people digging up the road than we do these kind of things or hitting culverts.
Like I said, we just put in a big sign order for, I can't remember what the dollar amount was and half of them were ones that got stolen this winter.
So essentially, these just put you in, just bring on a kind of a different tool that falls into your sign program, essentially.
Yeah, I run a pretty good size.
And the bottom, and the beauty of that though, is that the HOA's pay for them upfront. You know, which is kind of a, other ones you put up, we have to buy.
Now, I'm assuming that if something gets destroyed totally, where we can't, we have to buy another one. You go back to that HOA and say, hey, it's not our fault, it's not your fault, but we need some more help to buy you another one.
I mean, well, okay, sitting right there.
Even once you accept them, you know, it kind of has to become a county issue.
Well, it's just like accepting roads. We're asking HOAs to take care of roads. We, we can't continue to accept expenses that taxpayer dollars that we don't control.
We decided not to accept any more roads like that too.
And so, but now we're accepting all the signage that's being paid for by the HOA.
But I think that's.
I'm just questioning what the policy is around it and what are we gonna accept? Maybe there're gonna be a $40,000 sign.
Now we have a different issue. That's a different issue.
So if, if your, if your desire is to have private entity maintain and be responsible for these signs. Jeff and I just recently worked on an agreement for, for some work that was done on private property that was allowed in the right of way. And in that, and in that agreement, we said, this is your responsibility. If it ever needs to be moved, it's, it's at your expense and this is, this is not our expense going forward. We can mod, you know, slightly modify that same agreement to, to cover these issues going forward. So if, if that's the direction you want to go, I'm happy to help. But I think we've got, we've got an agreement in place that we can modify to cover these things.
It's not that I don't want to, I'm just questioning it. I mean, we are making commitments with dollars that we don't have in the road department to fix something that, you know, it was this HOA that came to the county and said, you know, we would like a sign put up here. You know, these conversations, we, we indebted ourselves and five years down the road, we start kicking ourselves because we, we say, hey, we didn't think about that. At the long-term expense of this, because you're taking it on for eternity.
You know, I personally feel like the way it's being done now is the way to be doing it. But I think these questions need to be asked and answered. But thing is, is you, you have a sign program, no matter how you go about it in the county, there's a signing program. And you have, you, it costs money, you know? So this is a little bit, it's a more higher tech sign, obviously it costs a little bit more money.
I think that, yeah, I think, I guess one other thing that from a legal perspective that I would, I, I would want you to consider as you are discussing these with homeowners associations is that we, we need to have a process for putting structures in the right of way. That is, that there's, there's a formal process because we own the right of way. We've got to control what goes there and what doesn't go there. And we just can't have things popping up in the right of way that, that isn't there. But as we go through that, or go through and develop that process, we can kind of get on the same page with, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna maintain the sign if and when it, you know, needs to be replaced or repaired. And these, I know we're formalizing things that had not previously been, been quite so formal, which requires a little bit more work administratively on the front end. But the goal being, we won't have any surprises come, come back to get us later.
But Brian or Jeff, isn't this kind of different? Because this is going in ITD's right of way. This is an ITD highway that it's being put on. It's not a county road.
It's our sign.
But it's gonna be our sign because we're the only ones that can seem to get that done.
That's another party that needs to be at the table.
So is there, I always bring up the liability issues. I mean, it always just speaks to me. So we have an HOA that comes to us and says, we have an issue with speeding in our subdivision. We're concerned for the safety of it. We accept this sign, put up a sign. Are we in any way acknowledging that there is some liability there if people are speeding in a community? Or does this impact, it's just a, it's just an informational only tool? And we're not acknowledging anything, accepting any risks for anything?
Law, correct me if I'm wrong, MUTCD, Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, states that you legally only have to have one speed limit sign going into a subdivision if that's the only road going in. I'm gonna pick, oh, sorry Doug. You go in there, there's only one road going in, one road coming out. There's a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign just past the vet. Legally, that's the only sign we have to put up. But wagon wheels, the same way, we've got 40 signs in that place because people, well, once we get in there and come out, there's no speed limit telling us what the speed limit is coming out. Same speed as when you went in.
The number, the number in the placement of signs, I mean, I think obviously you've got a very, a very detailed manual on how that's to work. And, and we need to follow, we need to follow those procedures. The, the thing that I think we need to be very careful about is making sure that we do follow those manuals as far as the placement goes. I think the biggest liability is, were they incorrectly placed? And, and someone is injured because they slid off the road or whatever, you know? Come up with any scenario you want where someone's property is damaged or they're physically injured. As long as we're following, we're, we're following the process for the placement and the location of the signs, then, then we should be fine. But if this is a, if this is a ITD right of way, that's, I mean, obviously we have to have their permission to put anything in there right of way because they own and control what goes, what goes there.
Has anybody ever gotten a speeding ticket for running over a, a speed? I went too fast, slid off the road and hit the speed limit sign?
I can't imagine that that has not happened, but I'm personally aware of one, no.
I could, I could try that, see if it'd work.
Following that manual, all of our signs are four by fours. After they're plowing down, they're three and a half by three and a half. That's why we break off so many in the winter time when we're plowing, because they have to be a breakaway post. Anything bigger than a four by four has to have a relief hole drilled in it just above the ground or actually two of them. So if somebody does hit it, like El probably did, because he's probably speaking from experience, it'll actually break off instead of making the airbags go off.
That was a long time ago. I want the public to know that was a long time ago.
I agree with this one, but what I'm hearing is we're working collaboratively with HOAs. And we, we've got a lot of HOAs reaching out, wanting us to do stuff. We just need to be cognizant of the expenses that we are committing the county to for eternity. Cause once we accept it, we have that replacement value forever.
Well, the, one of the things that's kind of important about this is if one, if a snow plow pushes one of them over, breaks it, unlikely is number one, it's gonna be pushed over in snow. It's unlikely to destroy it because it's, it's just basically this little unit that sits on top of the post ball over in the snow. And if it did, any part of it, it'd probably just be a, a little like part, fixing your car, you know? You don't replace your car when you need a carburetor. I mean, you know, so it's like, like maybe looking at the cost of them going, oh God, that'd be expensive. But you're never gonna replace probably that $4,500 one. You're gonna replace maybe a 10, a 15 or 20 or $30 part.
No, but if somebody does slide off the road, coming up the highway and hits and takes it out, we can claim it on their insurance and get reimbursed.
There you go. You, you have that option as well.
Same thing as a fence.
Yeah.
It may take two years before you see the money, but you can claim a fence too.
That's, that, that's the likely scenario. And whenever, you know, if there's speeding or anything else on the criminal side, the prosecutors are always looking for reimbursement, reimbursement for property damage to.
But I guess the real point here is, is what, when Jeff's moving it forward with this, is that some level of confidence from his standpoint, okay, I'm okay with the county here. You know, this is, this fits into our signing program reasonably, you know?
I think it's serving the, serving the public.
Serving the public.
What we're trying to do, we've really got to move on because we've got a jail inspection here in about 10 minutes. So your next action item is a certificate of completion right of way for East Side Drive. Everybody see that? That was in your packet? And I'm assuming we need to sign this for the grant? So that they know that there's no right of way issues and they can proceed forward. All work is gonna be done in the existing right of way. No utilities are involved.
That has nothing to do with East Side Drive? Oh, oh, yeah, nevermind, sorry.
The branch?
I'm getting a bunch of stuff mixed up. Yeah.
It's Monday, it's okay. So I need a motion then to approve this certificate of completion.
That we approve?
I'm not sure what you did, but.
I'm not sure he is either.
Oh, well, anyway.
Approve this certificate of completion of the right of way activities on East Side Drive.
I, I second it.
Move to second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Anything else, Jeff?
No, that's it.
We trust you, Jeff, gee me.
Jeff, just remember now that the commissioners have, have approved that Smith Ferry speed limit sign, you'll have to apply for an application with ITD.
Justin gave me all that information that I need to get from him.
If you can just make sure that we get a copy of that contract.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our next action item, which is review Waterways Advisory Committee membership and determine if the board needs to seek applications.
Oh.
And I didn't know we were short members.
Okay, I got, I got a comment from a person that wondered if we didn't have some open, some vacant seats on that committee.
Dr. Doug Rowe?
I, I sent Doug Rowe a message, an email. I haven't heard from him.
I think the last I knew, we were both.
Okay, so I went on, I went in, I, I looked around trying to find a membership there. And I really couldn't find, and I'm, I'm no tech guru, so, but I really didn't find anything. Brought up a point with me is I think probably, you know how when you go onto your Valley County site, there's all those buttons for different things? We probably should have a button on there for committees because it might be of interest for people to know what, who's on what committees, what committees we actually, we actually are involved in and what, and the, and the membership. And that, the question when they came up with that, they said they thought there was at least a couple of positions maybe available on the water.
Usually they'll let us know if somebody resigns and we need to fill it. Usually they let us know, but maybe that's not happening.
How have we been doing that? And I, I guess that seems to be kind of.
We did lose Al Wannenberg and he was on there.
That's a long time ago.
Question is, is, so they actually have a, I think they have bylaws. The Fair Board and the Road Advisory have, you know, bylaws that they follow. So I'd question how many board members were in those bylaws, if they actually have their bylaws.
Well, this is, I think this is a question. And I thought, well, the only way I know to get the answer to that is for us to talk about it. And so.
Well, there's a Waterways on the website, but it has a calendar, but it doesn't have.
It has some agenda, no, meeting.
The members.
It doesn't have, only thing it has on there minutes, it says Chairman Douglas Rowe and then a few other names. We don't know if those are committee members or people that are like the sheriff's department or folks that just stay, follow it, you know, month to month with their meetings. And now I'm gonna be the person monitoring that. And I thought, well, maybe there'd be some questions that we'll have there. But one on the last agenda meeting, Dave actually cautioned them about make, having, you know, not violating meeting laws. I, I wondered about that, what, what would prompt something like that? And then why would I get a question going, you know, do we need to review that process with that committee?
Yeah, I've gotten current down to who appoints them, but I don't see a list.
Open meeting laws, they have to post their agenda and their minutes, which I believe they're doing through Doug.
I believe they're doing that now, you know?
I think they've been pretty good about doing it all along. The others aren't always so.
Well, yeah.
I think they're, they're good about it, but I, I don't know the number on there. I don't know who's participating. I think that might be an agenda item for them.
I'll send Doug an email or text and have him send us a list of the present people on Waterways.
Right.
And if there's any vacancies.
If there's any vacancies.
And notify him that you're gonna be the lead commissioner on that. And I think it's an issue, maybe nobody knows your new email address yet or something.
Yeah, and, and there's, you know, I'm starting to get, I'm starting to get my advice to these things. Anyway, I just wanted to follow that one up because there was, there was a certain amount of concern there, and it has been ever since this Waterway thing kind of got to be kind of a major topic here three or four years ago that prompted really this new Waterway management plan.
They do two separate things.
Yeah.
To remember that.
It is, and that's, yeah. And at that time, it seemed like they were using the Waterways Committee pretty heavily for kind of massage that program, you know? And there was, there's water users that didn't feel like they're being maybe properly considered, you know, in their decisions, so.
Waterways Committee, and that was prior to me, so Elk can answer that historically. But the Waterways Committee does grants to spend the Coast Guard funds.
Right.
Period.
Yep.
And the Waterways Plan will have public hearings on it for public information and support. But if somebody is wanting to be on the Waterways Committee to impact the plan, that doesn't, those two things don't.
Yeah, anyway, and I kind of understand that a little bit, but they actually have a budget. In other words, money comes to us, I think you said Coast Guard, so it comes through whatever means that comes down. And then they get requests for projects. And so I think there has been some sense that there's, there's some biases toward the type of projects. So it's getting, in other words, are we considering the full spectrum of needs and use? And so I thought, well, first, let's find out if we get out, how the committee set up. And if it's full, if it's got, you know, reasonable, you know, I see member, membership. In other words, membership's not loaded, special entries or anything like. One of the people that came up, and I think is on that committee, is Scott Turlington. And Scott is a big player in a fairly major economic development program here. Is that appropriate type of, you know, membership to committees?
He's on there because of the proposed marina for Tamarack.
Right.
The reservoir.
So, yeah.
Is that a conflict of interest?
Is that a conflict of interest? That's what I came up, I came, yeah, I.
I don't think he's selling boats or anything like that, but most of the Waterways activities, sure he's very right. He manages the sheriff boats, the, all that funding.
Right.
The docks, the buoys, all that kind of stuff.
So anyway.
Different than the Waterways study that we're gonna do now.
I'm seeking kind of a little bit of history, and that's where I, you know, it's like when you move into something like that, you don't want to walk into a, I weren't at Seastorm or something like this. I mean, you know, is it, have we been, can you keep on top of that?
Is there a link that Ed could go and do the research on what those funds can be spent on? I've been looking at the Title III because I have some questions on Title III. So I actually got into the federal program and looked at it, and I still have some questions on it. But there should be something.
I'm gonna talk to, dang it, I just went blank. Doug, who's the deputy that's in charge of Waterways?
Kevin Turner.
Kevin Turner, over Sheriff's Department. He could really help people with that.
Kevin, right, yeah.
And he can explain a lot of that to you.
Right.
I did send Doug an email to send me the list of who's on there now, if there's any vacancies. Do you have your county email address yet?
Yes.
Okay.
And I actually, I use that with Doug, yeah. He may be offline someplace, vacation this time of year or something like that, who knows? But, yeah, but I did look at that, and I tried to, so when you're looking at it and you don't really know the membership, you don't know the potential for conflict interest and stuff like that. And I think that's really important. If Tamarack's developed in a marina, why would they, for instance, sit on a board that could favor?
Well, if they can even reply or request a grant.
Yeah, they can reply.
If they can't request a grant, even, there wouldn't be a conflict of interest there.
Right.
I mean, it would just be their concern for the quality of the health of them.
Yeah. But that's, those are the kind of questions, and I think, I think citizens automatically, naturally.
Absolutely.
Okay, so at this time, folks, we're gonna recess until after lunch. We've got a county jail quarterly inspection, and so we'll see everyone back here at one o'clock.